The council member Derry Berry.
I think we've got everyone here.
Yep, and we are recording and we are just about to go live.
Okay.
All right, I was lying, I had trouble getting logged in for some reason.
All right, I think, are we live now, Sean?
We are.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this budget workshop meeting to order, it's Thursday, May 7th, 2020. And I'll go ahead and leave us an invocation if we bow our heads. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for another day here on your creation, and we thank you for living in this community and for the opportunity to serve our residents and businesses. As we enter this budget process, please guide us in making sure that our priorities are for our residents and for the good of our community. And bless those who are on our front lines, our first responders, those who are on our front lines abroad. And, and please, please, please give everyone safe harbor during this, this time of need, and in your name we pray, amen. Amen. I guess we'll do the pledge of allegiance, the flag's right behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all. All right, before we get started on the, the budget items, we did have two proclamations, one of which is for International Firefighters Day, which was this week. And we've got two of them, so I'm not gonna read them all, but we want to thank our firefighters here in Fountainhead, as well as those across the country and across, across the globe for their, their hard work and their, their continued sacrifice and for the sacrifice of their families. And we, I've got firefighters in my family, and we've got firefighters in our, obviously in our community's family, and we greatly appreciate the work that they do. And while it's just one day of the year for International Firefighters Day, and we appreciate them throughout the year. The second proclamation that has been signed is for Municipal Clerks Week. We want to give a shout out to our very own Sandra Woods for all the hard work that she's done for our community over the years. And Sandra is never allowed to retire, is what I think this proclamation says somewhere, probably, I hope. So we want to thank our firefighters and thank our municipal clerk. Today, we're covering our enterprise funds, our hospitality tax fund, and then a quick update from our city administrator and any sort of dialogue around that. Mr. Bell, I'll let you take it from here, and I believe all of our department heads for these departments are also here.
They are. Can you confirm that you can see my screen? It looks like it says City Fountainhead Budget Workshop, it's PowerPoint?
I can.
Okay, great. At this time, I will turn it over to our finance director, this is Naomi Reed, and she will walk us through this.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean, Mayor and Council. We want to start off by thanking Mr. Eduardo Noriega, Fountainhead Natural Gas Director, and Roger Case, our help director, for meeting with Sean and I throughout this entire process and helping us present a balanced budget for Fountainhead Natural Gas Fund and the sewer fund. Also want to take a minute to thank Sandra Woods, Christina Place, Allison Wood, Stephanie McCarthy for their assistance with this budget process, although some of them are working remotely, they have done a fantastic job helping us get this prepared. I'll just jump right into it. The budget process starts around November, December of each year. And during this time, Sean and I discuss the budget timeline, current year's progress, our goals and needs. We also discuss previous year accomplishments, salaries, health insurance, capital, the list goes on. Sean then schedules a council retreat that is held each year in January. During this time, council discusses important city topics and develops a list of top priorities. I feel that the proposed Fountainhead Natural Gas, the sewer fund budget and hospitality tax fund budgets being discussed this evening support some of council's goals and initiatives that was identified during the retreat. Council, during the retreat, they discuss a lot of items. Sean then compiles them into a document that breaks up their initiatives and goals into must-dos, should-dos, and could-dos. The next few slides, they do not represent the full list of council's goals, but it does represent what we feel we addressed at some level in the proposed budgets. The list of must-do's you see on your screen is to focus on economic development efforts in terms of recruitment, retention, promotion, and product development. Identify funding and financing options for implementing facility and equipment upgrades along with increasing personnel and their pay, and initiatives proposed in the class and comp survey. Also to evaluate the insurance, fringe benefits, and compensation levels for city employees, which we feel we addressed in the budgets that we are proposing tonight by moving on to phase two in our comp and class. On the list of should-do's is to update the city's web presence, have a secure platform for paying natural gas bills, incorporate marketing strategies and brand equity. You'll see in the Fountainhead Natural Gas budget that there is a increase in the website line to $25,000 to get our website back to the 21st century. Also, we address controlling growth with a balanced economic development preservation of Fountainhead's traditional and keeping Fountainhead's traditional hometown feel. So, and then on our could-do's, make improvements in accessibility sidewalks and parking facilities to support downtown. You'll notice that there's a transfer in from the gas fund to the road fund of $50,000, and that's to support some matches of our current road improvement plan. More cooperative initiatives between the city and Chamber of Commerce. And you'll see that in hospitality tax budget, that we are supporting the chamber, but also our history museum and the yacht center, and then improving employer retention. And we did that by addressing salaries, improving the on-call pay policy, and also increasing the employee, employer contribution to dependent healthcare. From the bond, does anyone have any questions? Just a quick highlight, so it's a fund, instead of us going line by line. In the Fountainhead Natural Gas Fund, we appropriated $694,567 from fund balance to fund capital projects, the list you have in the packet provided to you. And, and I'm just gonna go through the summaries rather than getting into the details, Sean will do that following the presentation. There's no rate increase proposed in this for the Fountainhead Natural Gas Fund. Like I said earlier, implementing phase two of the comp plan, there was a 2% increase in operating expenses overall, and also projecting a 25% decrease in service charges in response to the COVID pandemic. We don't, we feel we will not collect at least 25% of revenues and service charges. On the natural gas one summary, I broke it down by the types of either funding sources or expense categories. You'll see it, other financing sources is represented on the documents you have in front of you. That $694,000 that I talked about earlier to fund those capital projects. Our revenues increased overall by $143,000. Our operating expenses increased as well by $152,000. And other financing uses increased by $50,000, and that represents the $50,000 road fund, road fund transfer. So before I move on to debt, I just wanted to add there that the transfers stayed the same at $590,000 with the $50,000 increase. As we shifted the $50,000, we funded the yacht center CAFI contribution. We are now decreasing that from the $200,000, and so just reallocating the $50,000 to help serve debt service and transfer into general fund. So we, next slide is our debt summary for Fountainhead Natural Gas, excuse me. We partnered with Tyler Trout, who is the creator of Debtbook, and we put all of our debt into this software, and it breaks it down by the type of debt, our issues. We're able to quickly, at a click of a button, see our maturity dates, principal and interest. And so for the Fountainhead Natural Gas Fund, you can see the two issues that we have. Our 2015 A Natural Gas Revenue Bond was issued at $4 million and matures in 2030. And our 2013 Natural Gas Revenue Refunding Bond of 1.2 million matures in 2023. That is the end of the Fountainhead Natural Gas Fund. Sean and Eduardo are available for, for questions, and Sean, if you have additional items you'd like to add, give council some details, that would, I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Naomi, you did a great job. Wanted to start off, probably the, the number one item that staff is trying to address in all of our funds as a whole this year is the phase two of the class and comp study. It's trying to increase our employee salaries to get on a more competitive level with our peers. You will see that this year, in the natural gas fund, there was an increase in salaries of just over 10%. And that was not an, an increase in, in personnel, that was just increase in salaries. We came up with a methodology of how we were gonna try to address salaries this year that is indicated in the gas and the sewer fund. We are still working on it in the general fund and hoping that we can, that we will be able to afford that. But basically, what we have, our methodology is that city employees who have been with the city 10 or more years would be moved to the range midpoint in this fiscal year. City employees who have been here from six to nine years would be moved to the halfway point between the range minimum and the range midpoint. And employees that have five or less years with the city would be receiving a cost of living increase. Right now, we have that at 3%. And so that, that is what is causing the salary line in the natural gas fund to increase by 10%. And you'll see in the sewer department, that's increasing by 8.7%. Going to our capital items, we have 300,000 in new service lines. We have $100,000 allocated for the Fountainhead High School project. There's a, a lot of natural gas work that needs to be done in that general vicinity. It's not solely to, to provide natural gas to that building, but, but to provide reliable service to the high school and in and around that area. $500,000 for, for new subdivisions was put in for this capital budget. But I will mention that it was requested from our natural gas director of $763,000. The vast majority of these new subdivisions are in the Simpsonville area. They're not in our city limits, but, but definitely some of them are. 100,000, or a little bit less than 100,000 for new equipment. $5,000 for an electro-fusion machine. We can ask Mr. Noriega what exactly that is. $45,000 for a vacuum machine trailer, and $16,500 for a large meter corrector replacement, and $25,000 for replacing an obsolete regulator, and then $80,000 for new or replacement of large industrial meters. There are no, no vehicles being requested this year from the gas department. And as Ms. Reed already mentioned, it does have $25,000 in operating expenses budgeted for a new Fountainhead Natural Gas website. And then lastly, I will have Mr. Noriega talk a little bit about it. We had mentioned this, I think with the last council, about the Clinton-Newberry Natural Gas Interconnect. In the budget that was presented to you all today, we have phase one of that project being funded at $200,000. We left off phase two, which is $500,000 for 5,000 feet of a 6-inch high-pressure line, but realized today that the two go hand in hand. We can only do, we either do them together or we don't do it at all. And so that's really what makes up the bulk, or that makes up everything in our, in our capital budget for the Fountainhead Natural Gas Department. As Ms. Reed mentioned, the operating expenses really did not increase much at all. Those lines stayed pretty static, and really, the, the big tickets are the $300,000 for the new service lines, and then the, the anywhere from $5,000 to $700,000 for new subdivisions, and then also the interconnect project, which I will let Mr. Noriega talk about in just a second. Are there, are there any questions at this time? Okay. Eduardo, do you want to unmute yourself?
All right, Sean, I have one quick one, well, before we switch to Eduardo. For the road fund, are there additional dollars going to that, or is that about the most match we're gonna get out of it?
So we have our, our match from Greenville County, and then an amount of 30, about $32,000, and then also the $50,000 for the gas fund at this time.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bell. I wanted to talk a little bit about the interconnection with Clinton-Newberry. As most, most of you know, our gas system is singly fed by Williams-Transco tap. That tap has served us well since the mid-'50s, but as we continue to grow and traffic continues to grow and that area continues to grow, there's almost that risk that a station may be hit or be rendered unusable, for whatever reason that might be, leaving our 9,500 accounts without gas for days, if not weeks. As always, we've been, Fang has been talking out for years about getting a second tap for Transco. Well, when I reached out to Transco late last year, their price just for the tap and the meter was $4.2 million. That may not include our cost, which would be probably another million dollars to do it. So at that point, I talked to Mr. Bell, and we started looking at alternatives, and Clinton-Newberry has a high-pressure line in the middle of town, close to, to the south end of town. We can, the connection was there one time, it was taken down, but most of the connection is, is still alive and can be reconnected. And that's the $200,000 that would require for compensating Clinton-Newberry for their expenses to bring the station alive, plus updated meters and regulators to have that, that station up and running. Once the station is up and running, we have to connect it to our existing high-pressure line, which is a mile away. So we will have to install one mile of 6-inch high-pressure steel down Hunts Road, cross a railroad track, and we have to cross 385 into South Nelson Drive and tie it in there. That way, if, if the tap in North Main Street goes down, that immediately the sensing lines would detect a pressure loss and will open right away and start feeding gas from that side of town. Of course, we have two issues, you know, we can do nothing and just kick the can down the road, and, you know, that's everywhere else prerogative, we can do that. You know, like I said, it's never gone down since the mid-'50s. Or we can start planning about how to in the, in the event that, that that station does goes down, or Transco has some issues or whatever it might be. Clinton-Newberry has been very friendly and approachable and, and ready to work with us to get the station up and running, and they have plenty of pressure capacity, plenty of gas there. So it's, it's, it's a very attractive alternative that for around $700,000, $750,000 compared to the maybe $5 million that Transco would do it, we can get a second feed into our system.
Eduardo, am I correct in that this project has some useful benefits to the city, not just as a kind of an insurance policy, but am I correct in that we have some potential pressure issues down the line as we gain more, more customers on that end of town? And this Clinton-Newberry Natural Gas Interconnect would help reduce that low-pressure situation?
That's, that's correct, that that area of town continues to grow. Owens Park is there, we hope to keep growing that area, Jones Road, and we keep expanding the system and east of town. That's correct. We do have some Asian Country Garden, we have some pressures out there. And this, and we can also, this, this, this interconnect will help us with additional capacity, which right now, we cannot get from Transco because the pipeline is fully subscribed. So yeah, it will, it will feel, it would satisfy other demands for us.
Eduardo, can you talk about the, you know, I know we have it currently with like some sort of phase one, and Sean said that that may not be really the reality. Can you talk a little bit more about that detail?
Yeah, and basically is, you know, we can, if we want to split up the costs, we can do the station this year, get it all set up this fiscal year, get it all set up and spend the $200,000, get the station, you know, up and running, test it, and then it will go dormant. And then phase two will be the mile of 6-inch pipe. And the ideal would be to do them together, so that way you don't have that, that, you know, year and a half gap. But we can do it if, if it makes everybody more comfortable and be better than nothing, as we do the station this year and we do the, the pipe next year. Keep in mind that every time we kick this down the road, it's going to cost more money. But nonetheless, that's, that's, that's definitely an option that we can do. The ideal would be to do it all at once, of course.
Right, right. Anyone else have any comments or questions on this particular topic?
I did want to add that I ran both scenarios with the $200,000 cost and the $500,000 cost, just to make sure that our fund, if funding it by cash was the option and the way we continue on, we will, the unassigned fund balance will drop from 6.4 million to 3.9, but we still maintain our debt service coverage ratio, we still cover our operating costs. Our debt service ratio coverage is 1.3, 1 to 3, and it will, we'll be at 3.62 with funding the project in whole, and also our days cash on hand, that would take a hit. But just by nine days, our target is 210 days, and it would drop to 201 days. So I just wanted to, you know, put that out there as well, that the fund could afford it if we go down the road of funding it with cash. There's other financing options, but Sean and I talked today, and financing and going out for debt costs, costs, and if the fund can, can afford it, we would rather just use cash, and that's our proposal to council.
Yeah, I did want to talk about that a little bit. As you'll see in our natural gas budget, and in just a little bit with our sewer budget, you'll notice that we are using fund balance to, to quote-unquote "balance" our budget this year. And in both cases, we have some very large capital expenses or projects that we're tackling. Staff feels that, that using fund balance or using cash is, is the most prudent option. Really, the alternatives to using fund balance or cash are borrowing that, for those projects or equipment or what have you. But anytime you do a large borrowing, there's a, there's a lot of expense in that for the cost of issuance. We have attorney fees, we have financial advisor fees, and then, you know, just anytime you borrow, you're gonna have quite a bit in just interest. I know interest rates are extremely low right now, but, but nothing beats zero interest when you, when you're borrowing from your, from your fund balance. And then the other alternative is to just cut back or not do as much. But with the natural gas fund, I mean, I, I think Eduardo made, made a pretty compelling argument for the Clinton-Newberry Natural Gas Interconnect. But then in addition, the difference between like this year's natural gas budget and some previous ones is just the, the vast amount of, of natural gas expansion that we have with the $500,000 to $750,000 worth of subdivision work, the high school project, and the $300,000 worth of service lines. I think we, we all know that Fountainhead is growing rapidly, but I think it also needs to be taken into account that, that our Fountainhead Natural Gas service territory goes well beyond just our city limits. Simpsonville is also growing like crazy, and many of the subdivisions that we would be funding out of that $5,000 to $700,000 worth of, of work would be even in the city of Simpsonville. The ROI for that in, in the natural gas realm is always very positive. We typically will be able to recoup those expenses within several years, sometimes as little as three to five years. I'm going to unmute Councilmember Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, sir, thank you. So to pay for this, would this come, would it be an increase in taxes for the residents, the people of Fountainhead?
No, sir, this, this is keeping our natural gas rates exactly the same. This, this would not be a natural gas increase. Prior to COVID-19, we had talked about doing a slight increase on some of our, some of our customers, not residential. Because our natural gas rates haven't been increased in many years, we feel like it's best to do that incrementally, rather than wait till we get to a point where we need to raise rates and then it's a, it's a humongous percentage increase. We were looking at, I think it was between a 2% to 3% increase only on, I think, some very large customers. But with COVID-19, we don't feel like in the, at least in the natural gas world, where especially while that increased, it would affect businesses, and we just didn't feel like that, that was necessary this year. So none of the, none of these projects would require a natural gas rate increase?
Is, because of COVID, and we don't really understand the full impact yet, is there a way to structure this where, I agree, doing it all at once gets us online and gets us quicker to recoup the cost, rather than having, I guess, six to 12 months where we're not getting any money to pay back what we would have invested if we did the whole thing at once? Is there a way, Eduardo, I guess, to still think of it as phases, but as phase one nears its completion, getting strong quotes on it, and we, at that point, seeing where the, where the economy is around us?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we can, we can, but we will have to stage it anyways. We cannot do the station and the pipeline exactly at the same time. My preference would be to do the station first, and as soon as I finish, finish that one. So that will give us a few months to gauge the impact of COVID-19, plus see how finances are going, so absolutely.
Yeah, because, I agree, I agree with the mayor because of the fact that, and when you look at it too, we're going into some summer months, and we don't use as much gas in the summer as we do in the winter and the fall. So would that make a difference in our rates?
So our, our projected revenue... So our, our projected revenue for fiscal year twenty 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 one, which is the fiscal year that begins July one, that revenue is taking into account an entire twelve months. So that takes into account the, the, the summer months where we don't receive nearly as much. And it also takes into account those winter months where, where we do see a, a large increase in, in natural gas burning.
Because of, of Sean, because the reason I say that as a residential, as being living in a residential, I noticed that even when I look at my gas bill, month to month, and I compare it to last year, it runs the same. And I'm like, how can that be when you monitor, I'm monitoring it more and we keep our thermostat at a certain level, but we still be in charge basically what I paid last year?
I would also think, Sean, you may want to send it around to council. Every now and then I've asked about our rates. And for the last two, three months, we've consistently been the lowest, near the bottom, if not the lowest. But consistently in the last few months, especially, we've been, I think, the lowest. Mr. Cunningham, though, to your other point, I, it feeds into the question I asked Eduardo about, you know, I, I like the idea of phasing it. I don't know if we can take the full project into the budget with the uncertainty of the economy, but I do think wait those few months. We also had a warm winter this year, and I'm interested to see what next winter does. That'll impact decisions around natural gas as well. Anyone else have questions or comments? I don't see anyone or hear anyone. And, and Mr. Clemmer, just so you know, you're on, you're on mute on, and you should be able to undo that on your phone if you ever want to chime in. I can't see you to wave you in, just FYI. All right. Mr. Bell?
Right. I will turn it over to Mrs. Reed where she will talk about our sewer fund.
Thank you. Same as the gas fund, I use the same format to summarize some budget highlights of the sewer fund. We also accounted for an appropriation of balance for capital projects of five hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. The sewer fund, we are also not recommending a rate increase. Implementing phase two of the comp and class survey and increasing employer, employer pay dependent major medical health insurance contribution for employees. The operating fund shows a decrease on the documents you have in front of you, but that is just reallocating and appropriately classifying capital projects in, in the right class as, as opposed to expenses for the sewer fund, and also projecting an eleven point two increase in revenue. And that's just due to growth and, and just an under budget, honestly, of the current fiscal year's revenue for the Ringo Water sewer collection fees that we use, that we get collect from Ringo Water. And then a slight decrease from Lawrence Water. And just talking to our, our contact at Lawrence Water, just trying to understand where that decrease is coming from, they are not at the point where they can shed any light on that, but we are trying to stay in contact with them and will provide any updates. And, and it could level out in June when some of the customers begin to pay and pick up their, their bills again, but we'll just continue to monitor that as we progress through the budget process. On the next slide, I just broke down the sewer fund, same as I did with the gas fund. Other financing sources is that appropriation from fund balance of five hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. Revenues, extra slight increase, one hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. Operating expenses shows a decrease, but that is, again, because capital items were in the current budget improperly classified in the proposed budget as operating, no operating expenses rather than capital. And no other financing uses. We do not show any transfers from the sewer fund in this budget. Our sewer fund debt summary, this is in total, there is three point eight million dollars in debt that we still outstanding, and we have maturity date of, for the two thousand and fourteen sewer revenue bond of May first, with a million dollars left in that borrowing. The two thousand and twelve sewer revenue refunding bond is about two point eight million dollars with a maturity date of, of the same May first, twenty twenty nine. And we have Roger Case, our public works director here, available for questions. But prior to that, I'll let Sean go into detail.
Thank you, Ms. Mrs. Reed. I was going to talk a little bit about the, the capital projects. As mentioned, there are very little changes in the, in operating expenses. As mentioned, we have the, the salaries increase in the sewer department of eight point seven percent. But over in the capital side, we have some equipment that was requested. A concrete grinder for six thousand dollars, an easement machine for twenty five thousand dollars, a one vehicle replacement, a, a truck, a pickup truck for fifty thousand dollars, and a sewer camera for sixty thousand dollars. That's a, that's a camera that we would insert into the sewer lines and lets us know when there, when there are issues, when there's roots and cracks and things like that in, in the lines. As far as projects go, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for the sewer rehab project that actually started this year. That was a project that council approved. We executed it with IPR Southeast, and they are actually underway. But we anticipate a lot of that being funded in our next fiscal year. We also have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant match. Pretty recently, city teamed up with our rehab sewer engineer, Aaron Frazier, to complete a Rural Infrastructure Authority grant application in which we would pledge two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of sewer revenue to go towards sewer rehab. And that would be matched by a grant from the state of five hundred thousand dollars. So if that is awarded, we, we would have a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of rehab work, which is, that's a good ratio of being able to put in two hundred and fifty thousand and get seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars completed. We, we should know whether or not we were awarded that grant later this month or early June. It is a competitive grant process. They, they base a lot of it on, on need. But one of their highest marks when they're, when they're grading those applications is how much the applicant is, is putting in for a match. And, and I think that that makes our application very attractive. So, so we will see. And then the other project that we have on there is the one hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for a, a development agreement that we've all kind of talked at nauseam about that would be over on Old Fairview Road. This is the project related to Mr. Todd Fusco. So we have that in the budget as well. I believe that's all I have. Be happy to let Mr. Case chime in at this time.
I would just like to thank council and Sean for leading us to appropriate enough money to do our rehab work. We got a good report from the rewatch. We recently got a good report from Aaron Frazier, which is overseeing our rehab. He's saying we are way ahead of most municipalities and sewer district in our rehab. And pretty well giving us a thumbs up on everything we're doing and the approach that we're taking here. So just thank you, and everything's looking good in the sewer department. Thanks to y'all.
Mayor, Councilmember Clemmer has a question.
Mr. Clemmer?
Yeah, so I was just looking, it made me think about something that's, and this is really not a big deal at all. Mr. Case, I saw where you appropriated or requested a little more money for fuel in our vehicles, and it made me just think with fuel costs where they're at as we go forward with other departments, police, fire and so forth, should we just make sure that we're looking at that because we might be able to set a little cost out there?
Yes, sir. Most of this is kind of projected. Hopefully, we'll be able to still be in the, in the black when it comes to the end of the year. It's just kind of a crystal ball whether it's going to bounce back up or not, but we're looking good at it.
Yeah, I understood completely.
Councilmember, I, I would like to emphasize that we do have three employees in the, working directly in the sewer department now. That, that's an increase of one from, I believe, last year where, where we only had two. And so having three means an additional vehicle and just additional driving around.
Got it. And during work.
Well, yes, driving around and, and really doing a great job with, with our, our sewer infrastructure. And they actually take care of a, a lot of our stormwater issues as well.
Yes, sir.
I had a question for Mr. Case on sewer rehab. I know it's never really a done job, but about how much more do we have before we are, you know, you know, I would say as much completed as we can be?
I think we got a little ways to go. What was projected, Sean, on the estimated to completely do our system, three million?
Yeah, I actually have a, a report that we received just recently. And Aaron Frazier had put together kind of a capital plan for us. And he estimated about three and a half million dollars left of rehab for, which would take, all of our manholes would be rehabbed and all of our sewer, sewer lines would be rehabbed. So there'd be, there'd be no more clay. Everything would would be PVC or ductile iron, and all of the, all the mantles would be rehabbed. One of the, the reports that we just had, that we received from an engineering firm that was paid for by Metro Connects, the engineering firm was CDM Smith. They took a look at all of our information, and they had a, a little bit higher of a, of an amount. But they included the laterals and service connections. And because Metro Connects owns the sewer laterals in their system, I don't believe any of the other sub-districts in the area, definitely not the municipalities such as Simpsonville, Malden, TR, or us. We don't own those, those sewer laterals, and so therefore it, it's not our responsibility to replace them. Metro Connects does. So that engineering firm did have, I think, our estimate at just over four and a half million, I believe, to have our entire system rehab. But that, again, included the sewer laterals.
Thank you. That, that helps a lot. It's a big, I mean, it's got to be a priority of ours and, you know, when I keep doing it. I was just curious about how much, how much more might be out there. Thank you. I don't see anybody else chiming in. Mr. Bell?
All right. Are there any other questions on sewer? If not, I will turn it over to Mrs. Reed to talk about hospitality tax fund.
Thank you. We've met previously about the hospitality tax fund when discussing the grant applications. So I won't take much time. The hospitality tax fund budget highlights include a four point three percent decrease in hospitality tax revenue collection. This is just in response to some very preliminary numbers that we have as it relates to our March collection. And so that we reduce the revenues that we anticipated to receive prior to COVID. Operating expenditures increased due to reclassification of the yacht center support. It was previously treated as a transfer to general fund, just because other funds funded that, that level of support at two hundred thousand dollars, and now it's moved up to the operating expenditure line, and then increased the transfer to our special events department as their events are projecting to be cost of more money just due to the, the level of, of production that they want to put on this year. And so increase from fifty thousand to seventy five thousand. Next slide, you have the fund summary, and you see the, the revenue reduction. It just, it looks like fifteen thousand dollars because it takes into account the interest as well that we earn in that fund. So our, from prior year, four hundred and twenty thousand dollar, sorry, current year, four hundred and twenty thousand dollar revenue is proposing four hundred and five thousand dollars, which includes, like I said, hospitality tax revenue and interest income. Our operating expenditures increased seventy nine thousand nine hundred eighty eight dollars. And our other financing uses decreased one hundred and fifty three thousand dollars, and that's due to the allocation for yacht support represented as a transfer in current budget and now as an operating expense in this proposed budget. On the next slide, on our hospitality tax fund debt summary, we have two outstanding debt issues. Two thousand and thirteen, B, accommodations and hospitality tax revenue refunding bond were five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars with a maturity date of April first, twenty twenty eight. And then two thousand and thirteen, A, accommodations tax revenue refunding bond, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars with the maturity date of April first, twenty twenty nine. Those debt issues funded the Woodside Street State project that is currently ongoing. Some of that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bell.
Just received a text message from Councilmember Clemmer. Mrs. Reed, maybe you'll know, do, do we have to pay the Sounds of Summer bands if, if there were, was to be a cancellation due to COVID nineteen or any other reason?
It is in the individual contracts for each band. The one we just looked at today that did have a clause in it that we had a certain timeframe for cancellation, we would receive fifty percent back for that cancellation. But we will just have to review each of those contracts to make sure that we are protecting, protecting ourselves.
Mr. Clemmer, I asked that question. That was good. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, can we, can we make sure that we, we do that? Because I, I don't, I'm seeing that concerts and so forth are canceled way out from, you know, their originally scheduled dates in other cities and municipalities.
Yeah, Mr. Clemmer, I'll say, I mean, this, this is my, I've been working on that exact topic for, since COVID started for my, for my job, and it is not looking friendly for those of us who are involved in, in the cultural arts sector of putting, putting people together. But I did ask this very same question you had asked, Mr. Clemmer, and some of them, yeah, are like Ms. Reed said, or have some percentages, others are twenty-four hours notice. So I think it's just going to vary based on, you know, we can use that to our advantage to see what things, how things shape up so that we can, you know, make, try to get our summer back to normal if, if it's safe to do so. Yeah, that's a, I think we do have to sort of look at that individually.
Amazing how we think alike.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Okay. Yes, um, I'll agree, I'll agree with you, I feel, and, and mayor. Because I know there are several events that was canceled and people couldn't get their money back. Nor because it, it was beyond their control. Now, it's a difference if, it's a difference if the group council out is one thing, but because of COVID nineteen, everybody already know what the status is upon that. And my opinion, I just feel like that if, if someone had booked in for a group to play, that's not, that's beyond the city control. So when it comes to giving out refunds, that's a no-no. I mean, that's the way I look at it. So when it comes to giving out refunds, that's a no-no. I mean, that's the way I look at it. You, you, you taking a chance at it.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I'm glad that we do have contracts with everyone that, that stipulate a lot of this. Uh, and I, and I, I know our special events team will work with, with the groups, uh, to figure out what the best solution is for both of them.
Okay. I thank y'all. I'm good.
Anyone else? I don't see any waving at me, Mr. Bell.
Right. Um, I, I don't have a whole lot to, uh, to really highlight in the, in that hospitality tax, uh, fund budget. Uh, you, you'll see in there, uh, that staff has, has proposed, uh, $15,000 to the founding Chamber of Commerce, $15,000 to the Fountain and History Museum, and $75,000 to the, uh, Yon Center for Performing Arts or CAFI. Beyond that, uh, that, there's not a whole lot else, I, I think, to discuss with, with, uh, the hospitality tax fund.
Any questions or comments from council? I'm not seeing any. All right. Uh, any questions, uh, for any of the department heads, Eduardo, uh, Roger, Naomi, or, uh, or Sean for about this? Mr. Bell, when I, I know you may talk about this in your report, but, cause it came to my mind now. What is the process that we are taking again for the budgets? So everyone's refreshed. We have a, we have a council meeting next week, which-
Yeah, it was, I was going to tackle it, but yeah, I think this is a good time. So the proposed budget timeline that we all, uh, discussed, I believe, last week, uh, would be that we have our regular city council meeting next week on May 14th, uh, but not holding, uh, first reading or our public hearing, uh, of the budget a- at that time. We would hold a special called city council meeting on May 28th to have our public hearing and first reading of the budget. And then we would, uh, we have a potential budget work session scheduled for, for June 4th. I would have everybody pencil that in. Um, and then finally, our regular city council meeting on June 11th would, uh, would entail second reading, second and final reading of the budget.
Thank you.
Couple of other things I wanted, uh, to cover real quick. Uh, work has started on the police department roof replacement today. And the contractor will begin mobilizing to construct the sidewalk from Emmanuel Sullivan Sports Complex, uh, over to McDonald's on Woodside Avenue. Uh, so you should start seeing some equipment and things over there soon. Wanted you all to make sure that you didn't forget about the parade for Mason, uh, which is Saturday at 3:00 PM, starting over at Garrett's Golf Carts and going through the Eagle Watch subdivision. The Chamber of Commerce has announced that their, uh, second annual taste in event will be held on May 21st. Uh, and I also want to let you know that our, our farmer's market is planning on opening on our, uh, original set date of May 16th. The, uh, month of May, we will have food and, and produce vendors only. Uh, we will not have any, any craft vendors. Uh, we, staff has, has met and, uh, with Mayor McClair and talked about, uh, all of the different precautions that we're going to need to take. We're, we're spreading out the vendors and we are, uh, uh, posting signs that, uh, if a citizen touches it, they, they buy it. Um, you know, we're, we're going to be mandating that the vendors wear gloves and just a myriad of those types of things. And, um, we're, we're pretty much following the, the same, uh, guidelines and precautions that other, uh, municipal farmers markets i- in the area are, are planning. And so we're, we're hoping that that's going to get, uh, some normalcy, uh, to our lives here soon. Greer, Newberry, and Simpsonville have all opened up their parks, uh, but they have not opened up their playgrounds, restrooms, or rec centers yet. Uh, I mentioned that just because, uh, Russell Halterwanger, our Parks and Recreation Director, has been talking to Malden, Simpsonville, and Greer, uh, about us all still having a baseball or softball season. Uh, the plan would be for us to start having teams being able to practice possibly as soon, uh, or as early as May 18th and games starting on May 26th and wrapping up by, uh, July 2nd. There, there'd be no makeups and, uh, and then we would also consider still having our adult softball league this summer as well. Any, any other COVID-19 related, uh, questions from the city? We, uh, we, uh, still have not determined a, a date to open up our facilities to the public. We do have quite a bit, uh, more city employees working onsite rather than working from remotely or from home. And I think, uh, other than the parks, I, I, which, uh, we would like to do all, try to do all in one fell swoop. I don't think it would be prudent to have, uh, basketball, or sorry, baseball or softball practice or games at our parks and not have the restrooms available or the playground available. And so if we, if we're going to open those up, um, I, I think we're going to go ahead and, and, and open all of those up around that same time. I anticipate, uh, the Governor McMaster to be releasing several of his restrictions here in the next week or two. But, but this does seem to be about the same timeline that other municipalities are, are going to be taking. Um, and then last but not least, I, I wanted to say Happy Mother's Day, uh, to Councilmember Dearie Berry. Naomi Reed and Sandra Woods, who are, all three of them are, are on this virtual call. They're, all three of them are mothers. We have a lot of city employees who, who are mothers and we wish them all, um, Happy Mother's Day. And I, uh, hopefully, uh, you, you've already gotten your gifts and, and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so, so don't forget. And with that, I don't, I don't have anything else, but, but more than happy to, to answer any questions.
I just had one, Sean, uh, for, can you, the sanitizing of those facilities, especially the parks ones, we'll have, I, I assume the answer is yes, but we'll have a plan in place for the regular sanitation of those, both between staff and also possibly professionals?
Yeah, before, uh, yes, sir. Before we, uh, actually open everything up, we will have them professionally sanitized again. Um, I, I will get that scheduled probably, uh, starting tomorrow, having those facilities cleaned. But, um, similar to our, our farmer's market, um, I know that's only a weekly event, but after every, uh, farmer's market on Saturday, we will have, uh, those restrooms and, and, and all of that sanitized and cleaned. And, and we would do the same on a daily basis with our recreation facilities, such as the playground and, uh, restroom facilities.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Bell?
Uh, council member Clemmer wanted to ask about the courthouse paving. The contractor was actually supposed to be there, uh, onsite yesterday. Uh, Mr. Case, did, uh, did you get a call about going out there or did you, uh, talk to Panagakis at all?
I have not had a phone call from them. Uh, I know they are still monitoring it and hopefully it'll drive up another foot when they do so.
Yeah, the, the last message I had from our engineers on the project were that they were going to meet the, the contractor onsite yesterday and they were going to give, uh, either Roger or I a call, uh, to kind of e- examine the, uh, the status and do a proof roll. Um, I guess that just didn't happen. And so we'll, we'll, um, be looking that, looking out for that in the next week.
I don't see any other questions or comments. Uh, is there a, uh, anything for you, Mr. Bell? You're done?
Yes, sir. Appreciate everybody being here.
Is there a, uh, and just for clarification, the next, next week's, uh, council meeting will be livestreamed again? That's-
Yes, it will be virtual, uh, same, uh, same type of deal where we're live streaming, uh, to Facebook. And then also anybody that wants to attend, uh, the meeting virtually can register in advance.
Right. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
AJ first, is there a second? Second, Mr. Cunningham, all in favor of adjourning, say hi.
Hi.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Guys, have it. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Okay. Good night. Hey.